Good morning and welcome to Business for Four Hours on this lovely spring sunny day. This is a nice change. I'm Lisa Hasty, General Manager here at Aubrey Business Connect. And I'd like to begin by acknowledging the traditional custodians of the land between me today, the Rotherham people, and pay my respects to elders past present in the village. And I'd also like to introduce our team. Today we have Tanisha Keane who looks after our events. She does a great job. We run over sixty events every year and Tanisha's behind the wheel making more happen. There's a lot of work that goes into them and we couldn't do without you. Thank you Tanisha. And you came in, the lovely Chloe Hall would have signed you in. Chloe's studying business at Charleston and doing her work placement with us. And she's been a great asset, so thank you Chloe. Brianna Vines isn't here today, she's taking some world of annual leads. And she looks after communications and as of Monday, member engagement as well. So we're really excited that she's going to take that role on and start interacting a little bit more with all of you. And I'd also like to welcome councillor Alice Flacken. Welcome back Alice, it's nice to have you here. Alice is very approachable and comes to these events to hear what's going on within your businesses. So please introduce yourself if you don't know Alice and make the most of her here as councillor. And we have some sponsors in the room, I think. How many sponsors here today?
I can hardly have a clue.
But we do acknowledge our sponsors because without their support, we can't do what we do. And they really are big about our business and the way we operate. So a big thank you to our sponsors. If you can support these businesses, we ask them to do that. And if you'd like to know how to become a sponsor, we'd like to talk to you about that too. So come and see this. And we've got a few new faces in the room, so we might just run around and say your name and where you're from. And then that makes it all a little bit easier afterwards if you want to go and connect with one another. So we'll start up the background, right?
Yeah, Corey from InterTech, Soft Solutions.
Thank you Chloe.
Justin from InterTech, it's the Soft Solutions.
Good day, I'm Tom McMillan from Core Works, electrical and mechanical, solar, C C T A.
I'm Gavin from L D O T.
Well, from Starfish Banking and the server.
Thanks, Matt.
Oh, there's Nick.
Tom from N E X.
Tom from Onagio.
I'm Jane in Harvard, you're going to run the discussion.
I'm Denalza from Charles Private Welsh.
Craig Brinstock from Charles Private Welsh.
I'm Blair, thank you.
I'm Nathan, I think you measured your account footprint. Alex very young, the chairman of ABC and we will get one of your software in a moment.
I'll introduce Alain very shortly.
Talia from H B P.
Hi, I'm Samaya, I'm on the board with ABC and I plan to set some funding for health services for people. How possible are you to help us?
Alice, just a moment, we'll go to Nicholas.
I'm Nick, why don't Alex dispose of his product?
Everyone needs justice. That's my man Alex Arpo here from our board. And I wanted to mention that our board nominations are also open at the moment. We'll send out a link for information. If you're interested in becoming a board member and having input on the strategic direction of Aubrey Business Connect, that information will go out via email. Thank you to our board members for being here. I'll now invite Alice up from Aubrey City to have a chat about things that are happening in that space.
Thank you, there's no Matt. Okay, so I'm a little bit lost, I'll just pretend it's here. Yes, so I'm here today representing Aubrey City. I do have another hat, I'm also the manager at Hilltop, which is the patient and carer's accommodation centre, right next door to the hospital. It's a community facility, very much a regional community facility. And it has guests stay there who are otherwise patients of one of the hospitals here in our region. And so they travel significant distances. Most of the people we have are cancer patients and need a lot of assistance. But other hospitals can also, or people visiting other hospitals can come and stay there as well. But today I'm here to talk very quickly, and I've got five minutes, so I've got to do it very well. Just pretend you're in a long elevator lift and you're getting your elevator pitch. So Snap, Send, Solve is not, it's indirectly related to council. But I want to show you a little bit about it because Snap, Send, Solve is a tool, an app, that you can download to show or to send reports to various organisations in our community, including council and lots of the things that are fixed around town are fixed because people send a Snap, Send, Solve report. Nicholas and I go around snapping all the time and we do notice that things are fixed. And we often get calls saying, can you clarify, et cetera? So it is an important tool, so just zip through this. So on your phone or your iPad, if you look for the App Store, and then if you search for Snap, you'll probably get the Snap, Send, Solve come up. So you just click on that one. This is the icon here, Snap, Send, Solve. If you get that, I don't think I paid, I think it's free.
It's free.
Yeah, it's free. So download that and it will ask you for your details, your email address, your name. I think you can give your phone number. It will ask for your address because that's often useful for them to try to track where the problem is. And it will ask you if it can use your location. My suggestion is to say yes because it helps you providing your reports. We've provided reports when we go to Sydney for a weekend to people that have infrastructure up there. So next one, thank you. So once you're in, you've put your details in, you click Snap down the bottom. There's a couple of trolleys left over outside the SSNA club. So I'm going to take a photo or you can use a photo that you've already taken. So often I'll take a photo, go home and I'll upload it when I'm at home. And it also gives the opportunity for you to give you a little description as well as to what the problem is. So you can do illegal parking, trolleys, you can do potholes, you can do something to do with power, all sorts of things. Rubbish, but the trolleys seem to be a bit of a hit. And the next one, so you then click down, once you've loaded the photo you want to load. It asks if you want to use the photo location, that's a great way. Otherwise you can move the little icon around to get the right location. But using the location on the photo is pretty good. So abandoned trolleys, animals and pets, that's okay. Community gas, graffiti, bangles, and there's all sorts of things. And it will often tell you, ask if you want to go to council. And when you're in Sydney, it'll, you know, it'll pick up where the council is that you're up, you're around. So it's a very helpful tool. So that's something that is a good tool for those of us who in our community want our community to continue to be where it is now. So thank you very much. Okay, so the other thing I wanted to tell you about is Have Your Say. Aubrey City Council has on its website, and if you Google Aubrey City, Have Your Say, up comes the little, whatever it is that you click on. At the moment, the things we have for Have Your Say are the Eastern Hill Master Plan. You will have heard about the plan for Eastern Hill. It's a fifty-six day consultation period, it's normally twenty-eight days, but this time it's fifty-six. And it runs until the 4th of October, so get your submissions in now. If you're really not sure what the plan is, but you think you want to have a say, hop on there, you can find the PDFs. You can find all sorts of information on that website. Another one is the Kiln Firing Service, if you're interested in pottery. They've got a kiln down at the, in one of the spaces out on the back of the Botanic Gardens. That finishes at 5pm tomorrow, so if you're really interested in that, reply now. The Alcohol-Free and Alcohol-Prohibited Zone, so this is really important, I think. So the alcohol-free zones are around the CBD streets in Aubrey and Lavington. And the Alcohol-Prohibited Zones are Kiwi Two, the Botanic Gardens and Noriel Park. We're making a couple of changes and we're interested in what the community thinks about that. So one of the changes is taking the Alcohol-Prohibited Zone away from the Botanic Gardens, which used to be enacted on Australia Day, so taking it away from there, but increasing it along the river. So the new River Precinct area, we're going to increase it there. And the Murray River Experience, so some of that space that's being redeveloped down in the Murray River near the pool has been opened. So if you want an advanced or an early look, go down now, it's absolutely fabulous. Near the Woodfire Pizza Robins, there's a draft advocacy plan, if you're not sure what that is, go on site, Google it. It finishes on the 21st of September. The Dean Street Parklets is there. So anyone in, working in the CBD, anyone who parties in the CBD, that's a plan that we'd love to have feedback on. Activating our centres, so the Retail Action Plan and the CBD Master Plans, they're up there at the moment. Would love feedback on those, thank you very much.
Alice, a little bit of light reading and homework for everyone.
Yep.
Hundreds of pages of plans and Have Your Say, but I think it's great that you have an opportunity to be involved with it. I'd like to now invite Alain up from Hugh Bank, she's part of the Financial Crimes Team. And today we're going to learn a bit about scam awareness and online safety. We spoke to the board this session and how important this is to business, also as individuals. So thank you for coming, Alain.
Thank you. So welcome everyone, I'd like to thank you all and I thank the Aubrey Business Connect for the opportunity to speak today. I've got Talia with us today, who's going to assist in just providing a little bit of context around what I'm going to be discussing. The thoughts that I'm about to share with you, they're targeted not only to small businesses and businesses, but also individuals. As we as individuals, everyone is vulnerable to falling prey to scams. So it's not specifically targeted at business, but we do cover a lot of scenarios, like business email compromises and the like. Just a bit of a disclaimer before we start, any information advised contains women are, has been prepared without taking into account personal objectives, financial situation, or needs. Before you act on this advice, you should consider its correctness. Your circumstances, you should consider the relevant terms and conditions of rights, close states. We're making any decisions about any prior conditions for now. I don't want you to sell you products, I'm not here to sign you up to Hugh Bank, to be quite frank. It doesn't matter who you bank with, you are still susceptible to falling for scams.
First you saw it on a website.
So the topics of discussion today will be current emerging scam trends, common scams impacting the local community, key ways to identify scams and how to protect yourself, what to do if you fall victim to a scam. So these are the current and emerging scam trends across the whole of Australia, not just specifically targeted to Aubrey and Aubrey Area. Phishing, smishing, phishing, false billing, business email compromises. Does everyone know what a business email compromise is? So we'll talk a little bit about that. Investment cryptocurrency scams, we're seeing a lot in this area, especially for investments. People looking to pull a little bit of money away in an investment, perhaps, you know, to future-proof your businesses, putting money away and what can happen if you get rubbed into an investment scam. Remote access scams, identity theft. And when we talk about identity theft, it's not just an individual's identity, but also a business, a business being impersonated. We see a few of that as well, and we'll touch on that as well. For sale, classified and online shopping scams, businesses fall victim to this. Also, businesses' customers fall victim to this sort of scam. Dating and romance, threats to life, arrest and other scams. The types affecting the locals at the moment, what we're seeing, not just at Hugh Bank, but discussing scams and victims of scams with other financial institutions in the area and what their customers are experiencing. Phone, text, email phishing and flubot scams. Does anyone know what a flubot scam is? So we will touch on that as well, I'll give you a little bit of insight into what those are. False billing, business email compromise and CEO scams, investment cryptocurrency and remote access. So these are all the types of things that are affecting our customers and our local customers, our local locals within the community. So these are just a couple of examples of the phishing scams that are going around at the moment. And I'm sure that all of you are aware of all these sort of pop-ups and things and emails and texts that you receive on your devices. This one here, this one usually affects our elderly population where they, this might pop up at the bottom of their computer. And it's a call to action, they panic, they call the number on the, on the, because they think they've got a virus on their computer. It's actually just an advertisement, it's just a pop-up. This one here, uploaded your pictures, this one here is where we see a little bit of exploitation around sexual photos, usually in relationships where there's dating online, people have met online. They send each other photos and then they get extorted into paying money because they're going to be treated with photos and things being put up online, sent to their friends and family. The one up here, the linked one, this is a big one at the moment, it's going around. People are being asked to pay a toll, an overdue toll, they've got an overdue bill. And rather than victims going to the linked site to just check out their linked account to make sure that they are actually owed on a bill, they click on the link. And what's happening in this scenario is by clicking on the link, they're asked to provide their card details. It might only be $2. They click on the link and then they're asked for their card details in. And then what we're seeing off the back of that, because they've got to put their name, they've got to put their card details, the CBD number off the back of the card, they make the payment or they think they're making the payment. Then what we're seeing is that card is being provisioned to a mobile device. So as far as you can go and shop, you can put your card on your mobile device and go and make purchases. And that card has been provisioned onto a mobile device that is not owned by the cardholder. So what we're seeing is fraud, as it was offered. And Talia, would you like to speak a little bit about that and a couple of victims that we've had in that case where we've seen verified by Visa transactions?
Yep. Yeah, so typically what we would see off the back of it is that, once you've clicked that link, your phone downloads, or it depends on what sort of phone you've got. But generally, your phone will download malware that's installed in your device, which stops the user, the actual cardholder, who has just clicked that link from being able to see any text messages that are received to that device. So once they put their card details into the linked website, or what they think is the linked website, somebody else goes ahead, harvests that data. And the text message that will then go to the general, the genuine individual's phone has been hidden. It's been hidden from that individual and sent to whoever it is who is trying to provision it onto their phone. So what used to be a safety precaution, a secondary verification to ensure that the genuine individual was provisioning their phone to a new, sorry, their card to a new phone, it's been hidden. So that, what used to be our bank's verification method is now being by these flubot scanners. That malware is stealing that. And then we're seeing these transactions that are occurring on the card around $500 values that came up were with all the genuine stores that didn't used to pick up with those sort of levels of transactions that didn't detect as a fraud pattern. So because it wasn't coming through as fraud, there was a while there where those transactions were being allowed to come through on those cards. And of course, because of the verification method of them, we don't have dispute rights. So we wear the cost to compensate the victims.
So that's where we talk about verified by Visa. So a lot of businesses, a lot of businesses that use online for their customers to make purchases. These are Mastercard introduced, what we call verified by Visa. It's a two-factor authentication where it protects merchants. So it protects merchants for claims against them for unauthorized transactions. Unfortunately, it doesn't protect the bank. So for example, if you're registered for verified by Visa, if you take Visa as your, as a preferred method of payment or a method of payment, and you register to be a participant in verified by Visa, then your business is protected against unauthorized activity. It's normally, there's verified by Visa 1.0, which is about to become, it's about to be taken over, decommissioned. And it's verified by Visa 2.0, which is SMS messaging. And this is what we were talking about, the SMS going to the customer to validate that they are the person that has entered their card into that website to make that purchase. Unfortunately, the scammers have gotten away around this by provisioning cards to unknown devices. And the other one over on far right, which is going around in the queue, is the Hi Mum scam. So what's happening in this space is that individuals, victims are receiving messages saying, "Hi mum, I'm stuck at the grocery store, I haven't got my card, can you transfer me some money?" The unfortunate thing is, the parents that are receiving these messages are actually transferring money to their daughters or sons, but it's not going to the daughter or son. So Talia, did you want to touch a little bit on that one?
Yeah, so typically we're seeing these messages come through the WhatsApp. It's not, it's not only WhatsApp, but get rid of it, just don't use that. But text messages that are going through, yeah, they're typically are going to a mum or a dad. They send them out to everyone, but of course, it's only the mums and dads who are going to assume that it's neat for them. Whereas everyone else will notice that, well, that it's a scam. When they get the text message, even this one here is a great example. When they try to, the individual prompts, "Which me is it?", they just use a generic response, "Your oldest and cutest child." So they, they're really good at just, they'll just stick with bland vague statements and quote that it's false for you. With these ones, we're actually noticing that even when they go to make the payment, the scammer will say, "I don't have access to my account" or "I lost my wallet, can you please send it to my friend?" And the name of the account that it's sending the money to, sometimes it'll be, "What did we have the other day?", I think it was Mohammed Akmar. And it didn't flag at all with the victim who had taken the money, that that didn't seem right. Their daughter's name was Tanisha, actually, I don't think it was yours. But you know, there was no flag there that their daughter was definitely not the recipient of these monies. And the individual sent over $15,000 in around $4,000 payment. The first one was, "I need a new phone", and they, you know, just those sorts of little things. And then all of a sudden, they were trying to move house and they needed furniture. Unfortunately, their daughter Tanisha was in the middle of moving house. So that made sense to them that they might need furniture. Yeah, they just continued to milk this customer until finally, her daughter called her and she went, "Oh, your phone is broken." And then she finally realised, she was a victim.
And the problem for us in this scenario is that usually the money is moved on quite quickly. It's usually transferred to another financial institution where it's been stolen, identity used to open up the account. And then the funds have been filtered from there out into cryptocurrency. So it's usually quite quick, recovery is usually very, very soon. The bank does not have insurance. A lot of victims out there believe that banks have insurance for these sort of scenarios. That's not the case. In the UK, yes, they do. They've got a program in place over there, the financial sector, that does have insurance for these sort of scenarios. But our insurance is, our customers, the victims, they're vigilant and are identifying them. They're cautious, question everything, I do. Although I got a debt of £10,000 whilst travelling through the Northern Territory just recently. So it does, it happens, it happens to be. Fortunately, I've got my own backdoor. Because it's not a card, you're protected on a visa. So false billing and business email compromises. So commonly these scams impersonate a business or a CEO using a similar email address and stolen branding and logos. We're seeing a lot of impersonation in business sector. We're seeing a lot of impersonations around people whose identity has been compromised through LinkedIn. So if you're on LinkedIn. So I'll give you a bit of a, a bit of scenario there. So when I talk about investments, if you're, yeah, we've had some victims where they've been Googling to invest money. They've, and I think it's been on the news recently as well. They've Googled, you know, comparison sites, so they go onto comparison sites. They'll give you interest rate, they'll give you interest rates with the mark and everything the way it is at the moment. And so they'll come across, you know, a site where they've got to put their personal details in. They've put their personal details in and expect a call back. They'll put their phone number and expect a call back. So they, you know, they will receive a call, for example, one example was, this gentleman received a call from Macquarie Bank from the investment team, wanting to sell bonds. Now, the victim actually did their research. They went on to the Macquarie banking system and they found that the person that they were talking to on the phone was an employee from Macquarie Bank. Unfortunately, he wasn't. And very convincing, fast-talking, smart-talking. It's probably that he is in, has been in the finance sector previously, this particular scammer. So the victim had invested, stashed some of the money into what he thought was a term deposit with Macquarie. Then it was an investment for 12 months. So then 12 months comes around, looking at reinvesting, starting to look around for the best rate. Found a rate with another institution, arranged Macquarie to redeem his investment. Only at that point to find out that he didn't have an account from Macquarie Bank. So that was 12 months that had elapsed before we found out that he'd actually been a victim. So his chance for recovery, zero to one. The most sophisticated scam is to compromise genuine email accounts. So this is around, you know, where you might get an email, especially your, your finance people, the people that are paying your accounts. They may get an email from you, or thinking it's from you, to make a payment. We're seeing a lot of that, we're seeing a lot of impersonations of CEOs. And again, all this information is usually being phished from LinkedIn. CEOs, chief finance officers, operating managers, their identity is being used to trick staff into making payments from the accounts payable to, perhaps, to these business account numbers to pay accounts that don't exist. Victims receive emails from scams containing a fraudulent invoice or instructions to make a payment to a new account. I'll give you an example of this particular scenario. So a victim in Aubrey and Aubrey was purchasing a new motor vehicle. He retired, he was buying, so upgrading his car, he was buying a new motor vehicle. He had been liaising with the dealership to make that payment for the car and he was due to pick it up the following Monday. He received the invoice from the dealership and he made the payment. Went to pick his car up on the Monday and they couldn't pick up his car because the funds hadn't been received into the bank. Upon further investigation, it turned out that he had received the email from the employee, from his personal email address, at 3am in the morning. And what had actually happened was, the employee's device had been compromised. Either through him clicking on a link, clicking on a link in a message. And that's what we call like a man in the middle attack, where invoices are intercepted, details changed and altered, and then they're on forwarded to the recipient. And the recipient is none the wiser, they get an invoice with an instruction to pay a BSB and account number and an account name. Names are not checked in the industry, in financial institutions. So we have no idea that a BSB number and account number that is sitting with Commonwealth Bank is owned by Talia, for example. So there's no way in the systems to be able to do a name check at the point of the transaction occurring. So it's always, we always advise all of our customers, if they're making a payment to a new payee or off the back of an invoice, or they've received information from that business to say, "Hey, my bank account details have changed, here's my new account details", pick up the phone, give them a call. We always ask their customers to validate and verify that it is genuine. Especially if you're playing a new supplier, always check verbally over the phone. Look up the phone number independently from the white pages to make contact with them. So again, here the invoice may be expected and sent from a genuine business, but intercepted by the scammer will alter the account details listed. This year, false billing and business email scams, and this is just what's been reported. These statistics have come from Scam Watch, I downloaded them on Friday. Scam Watch is really, really good. You can go to the Scam Watch website, you can find a lot of information for small businesses. But this is just what it's cost Australians thus far. And that's just from false billing and business email compromise scams. Investment in cryptocurrency, as I spoke about, they're unlicensed, unregistered brokers, usually based overseas. They're fast-talking, they're sleek, they've got fake websites showing them plausible returns. Usually upwards of 5%, 10% return. A lot of initial investment to build confidence, so that what I will do is do this. Uh, a lot of initial investment to build confidence, so that what I will do is the broker will call you and, and say, look, you know, let's just start off with a couple of thousand dollars. Invest a couple of thousand dollars. They send you the prospectus, they send you the beautiful website, you get on the website, you have a look, you can see your investments going up. You think, wow, this is great. I'm going to invest more. So they encourage you, they're fast talking, they advise it. Deal too good to be missed, but you need to do something about it today if you want to get in on, on the ground, on the ground. Um, they offer incentives to invest now, such as bonus deposits. Um, and usually cold calls, family members or online romantic partners, what we're seeing in this space. Uh, and advertisements by social media with celebrity endorsements. There's a lot of celebrity, fake celebrity endorsements out there at the moment as well. Um.
Shark Team, this is a big one that's going around at the moment.
Yeah.
Um, but there's also Chris Hemsworth, Jason Smith, Dex Smith, and then Emira LaFey, Elon Musk.
Yeah. Um, Australians' losses to investment scams this calendar year, as you can see, it's just, and this is just what's been reported to Scam Watch. Uh, remote access scams, I don't have time, oh, I'm getting there. Okay, remote access scams, so these scams are often viewed with unsolicited phone calls, text emails or pop-ups on the computer. Poses well known to trusted companies such as banks, telcos, utility providers or government agencies. Um, scams claiming computer, this is the elderly are falling victim to this sort of scenario. Uh, remote access, when they're downloading, they're being instructed to download any disk, which is, which is this program that does get used. They're being encouraged to download that, um, Tenviewer. And then what they're doing is they are convincing, usually the elderly that are falling for this sort of thing. They're convincing them that um, there's somebody hacking into their computer that's about to steal all their money. Because they can see that they, uh, that account has been compromised. They get them to log on to their internet banking. Then all of a sudden their screen goes black. Or they get distracted, they might be asked to um, write down, I'm going to give you some numbers to write down and, and you need to do this, write these numbers down. So it's distracting the elderly, they're writing down and not paying attention to what's going on on their screens. And what's actually happening is that the fraudsters actually, they're in their internet banking and they're transferring money out via OSCO, MPP, real-time payment. Um, and it's not until the, and then they might get told, don't show up the computer. Uh, don't hang up the phone. And the reason that the scammers are doing that is because if a bank is monitoring for that sort of activity, if a bank is trying to contact a victim, usually they can't get through because they're on fire to the scammers. So then they use that stall delay tactic. Uh, we had one victim that was told not to turn his computer off for forty-eight hours. So he wasn't aware of it. And it wasn't until his wife had gone on to her iPad and logged into her internet banking login and had a look and thought, oh, we've been cleaned out, where's all our money? Usually happens on, late on a Friday as well, we find that that's usually when it happens. Because then it's, it takes longer time for the victims to be in contact with their institutions. Um, so a- again, around the uh, the software. Usually when this happens, we will provide our customers with support. Because it's not only, it's not only financial, but their loss, though it becomes quite emotional. They become, um, uh, Tali, where do we, we usually send them to ID key? Because off the back of this, they're usually providing also photos of their driver's licenses, so their identity is compromised. Um, there's a whole raft of different consequences that occur as a result of this sort of thing.
We often send them down to verifiers. Yeah, yeah, get their computers cleaned up and everything.
And this is the remote access statistics just for this year. And on, on the Scam Watch website, you can see the demographic, you can do a little bit of search and have a look at their age and things and those that have fallen victim. Um. So how you protect yourself, so again, keep your device secure and your virus software, don't click on links in messages. Don't provide personal information, SMS verification codes, cards or banking details to anyone. It's your code to validate a transaction, so you're the one that should be putting that code in when you're making a purchase. Should never be a verbal communication number. Um, your bank might ask you for a one-time password, but usually when your bank asks you for a one-time password, you'll reach out to your bank. So you know that you've called your bank. You haven't provided the SMS one-time password off a cold call, saying that you're there from your bank. Always hang up, ring your bank directly, validate your bank. Never share your login, login credentials or passwords. Um, well-known company, request personal information, hang up and call the organisation directly. If someone appears to be too good for true, it usually is. And protect your domain name, so I'm not sure businesses and, well, I'm not sure, I'm hoping that businesses are aware. Um, the Australian Cyber Security um has issued, and I encourage everyone to go on to the, that's operating the business, because this is a really good, useful site for businesses, small businesses. It gives you a lot of information around what's going on in scams to protect your business. Um, but um, the annual domain name changes, does everyone know about the domain changes and how you've only got until the twentieth of September to, to protect your domain names? And so I'll just read quickly, so it was introduced in March twenty twenty-two. Um, the new option for domain names creates another avenue for cyber criminals to conduct fraudulent activity targeting your business or your organisation. Specifically, cyber criminals could register an A dot AU domain name and use it to impersonate your business. Such as by registering your business dot AU, where you have already registered dot com dot AU. Now you've only got till the twentieth of September to secure your existing, um, the equivalent of your existing domain names. Because then it becomes open source, it goes on the market and anyone can, can use those domain names. So I encourage everyone to get onto the Australian Cyber Security website and have a bit of a look at that. Um. Um, social engineering, I've got a little bit of a flyer here, and which, we didn't have time to put it up on the slide, but just um, around the red flags on emails. How to, how to, um, a couple of hints and tips on how to find where there might be some, um, key identifiers in emails. So I'm, I'm sure users are all aware of that sort of thing. But I, I do, I do encourage you to get on the website, do your own research. And I know it's a topic that, until you become a victim or your business becomes um, involved in something like this, it's, it's something that, it's just another thing that you have to think about. But I think if you can um educate yourselves by using those websites, educate your customers, educate your family members, your friends, anyone that you can talk to about it, um, it's only going to go a long way, excuse me, in trying to help protect victims. Um. And if you fall a victim, what you should do, so as, as far as businesses go, if they've had a data breach or a data compromise, there is a requirement that they need to report that data breach. Um, and you can find all that information on that, on that website that I've just mentioned. Um, if your emails have been compromised or your staff have compromised your, your business by clicking on a link, it might be that you're expecting an invoice from someone in, in your business or your staff member or your accounts payable staff. Click on a link and it invents malware into your, your business. Um, there is a risk there as well, so it's about keeping your staff educated on not clicking on links. Um, uh, not opening up attachments, especially if they, if they're not expecting it. Those sort of scenarios, and it's all in those, you know, those websites. Scam Watch, report to Scam Watch and report cyber if it's uh online. Ha. We made it, I'm telling you.
That's right.
Too good, sir.
Two, two questions. Um, when you type it aggressively to the website, let me type it up a little bit. Hang on, um, if that's locked, that really indicates it's a secure site, so really a legitimate site. If the term locked, it means it could be, or anything you type in could be seen, is that still relevant?
It is still relevant, and, and what we find with a lot of victims as well, when they're doing a Google search, they'll usually pick the top option.
Yes.
Um, we, we try and educate our, our, our customers and victims that that, that's not always the best option. Um, so you, you are right about, but it's not only just the little key, so there's other indicators as well. So um, when we talk about a space, if there's a space in the, on who it's come from. Um, if there's a link hovering over, over the link to just have a look and see where, where that's, where that's going to take you to. Um, uh, attachments, you know, if you're not expecting an attachment or you're not expecting an email, but yeah, you're right with the Google search, absolutely. Um, that, that little key, H T T P, say, com, et cetera, yeah.
And the other thing, the WhatsApp, I've got a colleague of mine who's in IT programming and, and quite a while ago, when WhatsApp sort of got into the market. Uh, I've got friends saying, get on WhatsApp, oh, I mean, he said, no. Don't touch the buttons, there's so many security rules in it. And a lot of stuff can be compromised. Um, I'm just saying that because I, I trust you.
Yeah.
But WhatsApp's, uh, it's a fraud system, we haven't got a lot of them there. It's interesting.
Yeah.
What's not true?
WhatsApp.
Well, just a mission, WhatsApp's an, an app, an app you can see missions, is that?
So what, what could you use in, in, instead of?
Mission, mission.
All that, all that. If I can just say, I'll change my Facebook.
Yeah, yeah.
So there's no real difference.
Where we're saying.
WhatsApp is our financial.
Yes.
There's always recheck. She's Chinese. When we, and we see even a lot in a Facebook Messenger as well. So then they're all, they've all got their vulnerabilities, that's what we.
But you do see when you're using Facebook, you're also interacting with genuine people you know. And when you have a new message request from someone who's not your friend, that will go into a completely different folder. So you have that little red flag there, I don't know this individual, do I accept or reject this message request? With WhatsApp, because it's just like a mobile number. Every message comes through essentially the same as a text message to someone. So it just comes up with a, with a number at the top, you don't know who that individual is. But there's no key identifiers to whether or not this is a friend of yours. Because with Facebook Messenger, you have your Facebook friends, which gives you a little bit to go on. But if you're using WhatsApp as a business thing, then maybe consider using something that's more business related, where you can interact with just people you know, rather than general public and all the scam bots out there.
Would that be like Microsoft Teams or something?
That's what we use, yeah, yeah.
Um, with, with the face, with the Facebook, you know, thing as well, though, people have been impersonated. So people have lost their identity through Facebook and, you know, you might get a friend request from somebody you're already a friend with. Okay, so what's going on here? You've got to start giving them a call, because we have seen impersonations and stolen, uh, stolen Facebook profiles um as well. Um, when, when we're talking about your business as well, when we talk about your financial institution, your BSB number and your account number, how it's not um checked, validated. Um, and I'm not sure if all of you are aware of OSCO and how you can register your ABN for OSCO payments against your business account. That's probably one of the secure ways.
Um, I just wanted to ask a question about that.
Yes.
Um, so obviously, yeah, with that old way that we transfer money because it's the ABN account number of OSCO, um, when you're registering like that, whether to jump in or jump in and then doing the OSCO payment, it'll actually retrieve the details of the person.
That's right.
Uh, sorry to, um, is there any future plans, I guess, in that financial sector to just drop our payment transfer system? So that we only are using OSCO?
Um, so the, the old system, so with OSCO, it's real time within, I think it's six seconds. It's got to reach the destination, um. Whereas the old system, the direct entry system, it's usually, it can be anywhere from um, one day to three days, which depending on the settlements and stuff like that. Direct entry is on the way out. Um, it will be overtaken eventually by OSCO payments. But with OSCO, you can make a payment to a BSB number and account number, to a, a, a mobile number or to a business ABN. So, and the addressing service that you talk about, where it shows you where it's going to, um, even if you put in a BSB number and account number, it will, it will go to the addressing service. And it will provide you with the validation details of who that, that, the name of that account. Um. The only problem with that is that we have seen a couple of scenarios, BSBs and account numbers are not secure anymore. They're just not secure, because there's no way of telling. Because I can go and open down an account at the Hembank, CBA, ANZ, just by going online and opening up an account.
But you need to supply your hundred points of identity.
So where we talk about your hundred points of identity, uh, it's your driver's license. Now, phishing, as a result of phishing, if you've gone to a hotel, for example, and you've had to go to your driver's license. So your driver's license has gone out of your sight, it's been gone, they've photocopied. Um, you don't know what's happening with that photocopy, um. If you've put your driver's license into other websites, for example, or you have answered, uh, you might have clicked on something and provided your license details at some point in time. I can go and open up an account, I can go and if I've got Tali's license details, that's all you need for your hundred points of ID. If you don't know the keyboard person that's on the other end of the keyboard, trying to open up an account for that financial institution, we can't visualize and we can't see who they are. We don't do verification of identification um via, um, you know, camera or anything like that. So I just need your name, your license number and the expiry date. And your address, which is all on your driver's license, and I can also fish that for Facebook. And I can open up an account with your name, and we're seeing a lot of that. The reason that that's happening is because those accounts that they use to mule or fish from unsuspecting victims of remote access scams. And your account's going to use to money order that money. So you don't, you don't need to present yourself in person to a financial institution, any longer to open up a bank account. So if you've got a business, your ABN is registered to your business. So you register your ABN with your business, you then um, your business account with your financial institution has your ABN attached to it. So that belongs to you. On your invoices, if you put on your invoices, that's if your financial institution accepts OSCO payments. The status method is to put your ABN number as the payment method. Pay my ABN number, this is my ABN number. You don't have to provide your BSB, you don't have to provide your account number, and you don't have to provide your account name. Does that make sense?
Got some more questions?
Yep.
There's one more. Um, so it was around the SMS verification methods. Um, and again, this is kind of probably a future subject, something, whether there's something in the pipeline to enforce, um, rather than banks using SMSs and B's using SMSs to use code generating apps instead.
Oh, I, I can't explain, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't really know the answer to that. I mean, the banks, the banks and B's, we're, we're constantly looking for ways to try and interrupt and prevent it. But the fraudsters, they, they just, um, they just evolve.
Yeah, so I know that there's probably a couple of people that's written that with their own, but yeah, SMS is always a very unsecure thing.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, when obviously when the banks were having hard trouble and they're going to SMS because that was convenient. I know there was a lot of the security sector was like, ah, no. Um, that's obviously been fair for years, people like that, now that, now that that technology's kind of really powerful. I don't know, Combank doesn't want, um, in, that everything's all through their app, so all their code generation's all through their app and everything.
There's still flaws in, in Libra system, though.
There is, yeah.
With, with remote access scams particularly, as soon as they download Tenviewer or E-Disc onto that device, regardless of where that code's going. If they open up a code generator or the Combank app or the ISM exist, the scammers have visual to that, regardless of whether or not the victim's reading it out. But more recently, we're also seeing a trend where the bank itself's being impersonated quite, uh, quite successfully. Where they'll get a text message saying, you know, you're, I don't know, it's a huge bank or department that's going to be calling you shortly off the back of suspecting fraudulent activity on your account, and then you get a call from Adam Smith and the financial crimes team. And uh, he'll ask you for a verification code to verify your identity before they proceed. That code that you've got, regardless of where you're pulling it from, you, you willingly give that to who you think is your fraud department verifying your identity. But it's authorizing a transaction, because they've already fished your card details at an earlier point.
I'm sorry, you called me, so I, I like, why, why do I need to prove myself to you? You called me.
Is there any, any more questions before we wrap up? Yes, Tom.
Just quickly, um, Alan, have you heard about the, was it from the government initiative to remove the email of inwards? So you upload it to a portal, access one of that site to remove that.
Um, I'm not sure that I've actually seen anything in that space, Tom.
Maybe it was, anyone was interested. Is that moving forward, management to use it on a system?
Oh, yeah, yeah, and, and then we'll, we'll talk about that.
With the government.
Yes.
And that doesn't go business to business.
No, no, that's right, yes. So the government, so that's that phase two of the OSCO. So the government, so that's that phase two of the OSCO type scenario as well. Um and but a lot of businesses are gonna um struggle a little bit here because a lot of businesses use MyO and things like that for their, for their accounts payable. And so it's just about, I don't know what the industry's gonna do as far as businesses go, it's the pool payment.
There's an app in any, every industry.
Yeah.
There's apps out there that are offering the invoicing.
Yeah.
Does that give option, that option technology?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, that's it.
Student.
But, yeah, 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 so. So if you're using zero, it's built into zero already. You don't have to do anything, when you go to create an invoice, there's all the fun that you can click to register, um takes ten seconds to do it. Um if you're with someone else, I don't know anybody. I use a custom billing system and I've tried to look into how to actually do it manually, so it's not, it's not easy to do manually.
We might, sorry, Alex, we might wrap it up now, but everyone's welcome to continue chatting in the room. It's about nine o'clock, so there's plenty of time. Thank you, Elaine. Um I think it was very insightful, I'm scared, I'm gonna delay WhatsApp. We're gonna read some security websites. We will provide the PDFs of those handouts, if that's okay, in the email that goes out. We'll link it, is that all right?
Absolutely. Free download, click on it, take it. But you know, it's coming.
It's coming.
So it's coming.
Um I'm sure we could probably do another follow-up session to this in six months' time because it's such an evolving space and it's really important that as businesses and the individuals that we stay across it well informed to. Thank you, Elaine, and you, mate. Thank you. Just going to briefly outline our upcoming events um that we hope that you can register and get along to. And then you're free to start your day, if that means sticking around and chatting, just take a coffee at the back, thank you.
I'm actually wanting to do this faster, you can keep chatting with Elaine if you want to. Um I encourage you all to get like one of these leaflets, I will send them out in the emails in the next uh twenty-four hours, so you know when it's coming. Um and there's little black hooks that Elaine and Talia have and H B A have brought, they're up at the back with the copy section and down the front here as well, there'd be.
The little back book of scams, it's a publication by the H C C, and it just gives you a little bit of stuff. And take them, give them to your parents, grandparents, children, things to read.
Yeah, definitely. Um so there's a couple of events I'm gonna get to, and to do it fast, I'm probably just gonna read from the sheet. Um so it's quite a lot, October's a busy month for us. Uh first one is the Aubrey C V D networking night. This is a free event on the twenty-seventh of September from five thirty to seven thirty. Um open to all Aubrey C V D businesses, uh bring along your team for a fun night out. It's gonna be at the Woolhouse, and there's more details on our website to follow, if you can start with um registering there. Uh Business After Hours, which the majority of you are probably familiar with, it's at Enhance. Um it's with Enhance at Willow Bank, just on the causeway there. Um on the twenty-eighth of September from five thirty to seven thirty. Make sure you register yourself and your team, um they're going to be promoting the beautiful venues that they have available for all events there. Uh Self Care Sunday, the Business Women Initiative, um Business Women Aubrey Wodonga Initiative. Um they're doing a self-care Sunday at Ardo. I think I may have pronounced that wrong, well, hopefully got it correct. On the ninth of October from twelve thirty P M to two, that's a Sunday, um so it's not a work week. It's a one-hour restorative practice, which will have you floating in the air as you enjoy restorative yoga, followed by um some afternoon tea. For our next business before hours, it is celebrating mental health for wellness month. So we have got total H R M in and step psychology to give us some tips and tricks for employee retention and how to keep your employees' mental health up to, you know, my standard and about fifteen. Uh that will be on the eleventh of October from seven thirty to eight thirty, as we all know, in our here today. Uh the next one is the Aubrey Wodonga Business Awards Celebrate Business. So in lieu of the Aubrey Wodonga Business Awards last year, we have put it on hold this year. We're planning a Celebrate Business instead. It's a unique one-off event, so it won't be happening then next year. We'll be actually holding a Aubrey Wodonga Business Awards next year. But this one will allow you to hear from past winners, connect with a lot of other businesses, we'll have a panel as well. And we'll get to celebrate the amazing Aubrey Wodonga business community. So that will be held on the eighteenth of the tenth from five thirty to eight thirty. Uh make sure you come along because there's some key information for twenty twenty-three that you guys wanna hear about. And lastly, is the Y B A Young Business Leaders Q and A that is coming up on the nineteenth of October from five thirty to eight. Um it's a young business leaders panel and going ahead, you'll get to hear stories from the owners, ask the owners questions, learn something that they're experienced and get insights of working in our region. And I'm back.
What goes into the events and administration, that's just one month coming up. So thank you, Tamisha, um and thank you all for attending this morning. Have a good day.